Hi Chris, we are live recording and on Facebook. So whenever you're ready to start. Looks like you have your quorum.
That's what I'm looking forward to see right now. I just gotta change my view. Todd, am I assuming that Bill on the bottom right from my screen is Bill Frederick or is that Bill Random? I just want to verify.
I am unsure.
Frederick.
Bill Frederick.
Thanks, Bill.
You bet.
All right, Todd, go ahead if you want to make your announcements.
Okay, welcome everyone. This is the village board meeting for April 19th, 2021. Welcome everyone. Couple of quick things which everybody's probably getting the hang of by now, but everybody who's attending is muted. But when opportunities for public comment start, of which there'll be a couple tonight, I'm able to unmute you. You'll need to use the little raise hand button on your Zoom application and I'll be able to bring you in to speak in the order in which you raised your hands. So tonight, there was a public, public comment section for any items, whether on or off the agenda besides what's listed as a public hearing. And during public comments, people are given two minutes per attendee. There is a public hearing this evening and that's when those attending have three minutes to provide comments. Already mentioned the raised hand. Close session is listed on the agenda. I'll mention that I don't think it's, it's likely that we will need close session this evening. But it is listed in case it becomes necessary depending on the board's actions. If we do go into closed session, I'll give more instructions at that, at that time. But during closed session, this is the screen that you will see. And then for board members, remain muted unless you need to participate. And then other, anybody besides board members, keep your video muted as well. And then we'll still do roll call mutes or roll call votes. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Okay, thanks, Todd. I'm gonna call the village board meeting for April 19th, 2021 to order roll call, please.
Nyla Frye here. Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Erin Moran. Bill Random. Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Chris Feldner.
Here. Okay, next we have confirmation of open meeting compliance. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on April 15th. The final agenda was posted with all three village posting locations on April 15th and the final packet and agenda were made available online on April 15th.
Okay, thanks Caitlin. Next we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or look for a motion? Nyla?
I move to approve the consent agenda items one through four.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Kristen Rungy? Any other comments? Okay, Caitlin roll call, please.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Chris Feldner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we've got our public comment section for any of those who would like to make any public comments to the village board, whether it's on the agenda, off the agenda. If you'd like to, as Todd mentioned, please raise your hand and they will call you in.
Chris, I know there was one thing you wanted to touch on quick with changing the recurring items for our agenda. Do you want to make note of that?
I will as soon as, if we have any public comments, I'll do that during mine.
So I do see about 10 people on as attendees. I don't see any hands raised at the moment, Chris.
Okay, well then I will make my couple of public comments. One, we have from the agendas, we're going to have our racism inclusion section once per month versus every meeting. Todd will be giving the updates or if there's something that's needed, we would add it at that time. Otherwise, those will come on a monthly basis moving forward. Second, I would say congratulations to Gary, Phil and Sam Kaufman on the recent election and being elected to the village board. And then finally, I would just public comment to say thank you to Kristen Rungy for serving out of his term after being appointed. Appreciate all the hard work dedication that you've given and I know that you'll continue to serve in any capacity that you can for the village and I'm not going to go into reasons why, but why you chose not to? That would be your choice to give that out to public, but I just wanted to say thank you again for the outstanding job that you've done. And we'll recognize you at a future meeting.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, and I'm stepping away because we have in my extended family, a family member that needs some help going through some medical issues. But this has been incredibly rewarding. Everyone that has been on this board that I have served with and some of the trustees that I've gotten to know from previous terms and the incoming trustee are all incredibly dedicated. It has been an honor.
So thank you. Thank you. Other than that, I think that takes care of public comments unless anybody else had raised their hand. Nope, I don't see any out there either. So Todd, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Bill Random to the meeting. All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. So our first presentation is the presentation of the Arbor Day Resolution and we have Sue McDay as our presenter.
I was thinking you were gonna read that, Chris.
Okay, it says on, it says on the sheet that you are the presenter, but I am happy to do that for, for us. So each year we have this as front of our board and I'll read it here quickly for everyone. So whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-saving, life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Chris Feldner, Village Board President, Village of Wannakee, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day in the Village of Wannakee and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Dated this 19th day of April, 2021. So I think we need.
Move to the Arbor Day proclamation as presented by staff.
Okay, motion by Phil Holmes, second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? All right, I got a thumbs up from Bill Random. We'll go with that as our comment for the night. All right, sounds good. Roll call vote, please Caitlin.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Feldner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks, Sue. Public hearing is our next item and we have a public hearing and discussion action on Arboretum Village Amendment to the General Development Plan and condominium plat for lot 61 at the corner of Quinn Drive and Hogan Road in consideration of the developer's agreement for the development. All right, I'm hoping now that the presenter is Kevin on this one.
And Chris, this, this item has been through our plan commission. It's actually was through our plan commission two times. It's a, it's a set of generally duplex condominiums. They are a little bit unique in terms of it's not going to be a master plan builder. They're actually going to be individualized builders of the structures, which I think is a little bit unique. And I think our plan commission felt comfortable because of the history and the experience of the developer to allow that to occur. So staff comments were pretty limited. So with that, Chris, I think it'd be appropriate to hold the public hearing.
Okay, sounds good. I will open the public hearing at this time. It is 6:09. So if you would like to make a comment or any statement, this is your opportunity. Please do so by raising your hand and Todd will bring you in.
Okay, I've got my eye on the attendee list. No, no hands are up at the moment.
Okay, so Linda Ashmore has her hand up. Todd, could you please pull her in?
Yep, thanks for catching that.
Yes, I'd like, I'm glad to see that some condos are going in. I think it's a missing segment that's not happening. There were a couple of things that I asked about at the plan commission meeting. One of them was that the road is really narrow. And the answer I got was that that's kind of normal for condos. And I guess my question is why? If there's standards for the village, then why do condos have different standards? And maybe that's something that could be addressed. And then the other issue is that it's right next to the skateboard park. So I was just wondering if they could do something as far as trees or landscaping to mitigate the noise.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Others? Okay, see none at this time. So I will say my normal going once. Going twice. Okay, we're going to close our public hearing portion at 6:11. Board members, any comments, questions for Kevin? And Kevin, maybe do you want to address that first question that Ms. Ashmore had in regards to the street size?
Yeah, Chris, this is something that we work with our fire department on and what was important to the fire department is that they have adequate space to maneuver their, their vehicles and they've asked for restricted parking along these roadways. I mean, obviously it's a very low volume roadway and our fire department is, is comfortable with the no parking to, to be able to provide emergency services to this area. As to the skateboard park, well, skate park parks there first. I mean, I think anybody that's moving in here, there have to be an expectation that it's, there was a park, an active park right next to it and it's very similar to other parks within the village. You know, there's going to be activities when you, when you live next to a park.
Okay, thanks Kevin. Bill, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
First was about the fire and the second is like a snow removal possible in this situation, I guess Kevin?
Yeah, Bill, it's gonna have to be hauled away. There, there's not adequate space on site. So there's, there's other places like this where, you know, when they, it'll be, it'll be privately done. So it's not going to be the village responsibility. So the private association will be required for the snow removal and I'm sure that they'll find spaces where they can. But I, I do suspect that they'll be hauling away much of the snow that, that comes down in this area.
Okay, Nyla?
Hey, I have a question pertaining to the roads. Do the roads in this area have the same specifications as the rest of the roads in Wannakee?
This one will. Yeah, this one will have a standard amount of sub base and base material and amount of asphalt that would duplicate. Kate, what our or, because this one, I don't envision this one ever becoming public because of, you know, there's not really the, the typical width in sidewalks and those types of issues in this area. But we have, we have a number of these throughout the village where, where they're private. Low volume, it's it, it's built to a standard in terms of the, the amount of gravel and base and asphalt, but not necessarily everything else that goes with that, with, with width and sidewalks.
Go ahead, Nyla.
Okay, I have another question. Protect, because I, I've been on the Public Works Committee for quite a while and I did see some property owners around a private road come when the road needed to be repaired and want the village to make it public and it was denied. But my question is, I realized there's going to be an HOA and that HOAs are responsible for repairs and maintenance and snow plowing and all these things. How do we know that over the years that the funds will keep going into these HOAs and that these maintenance, this maintenance will be done? And it doesn't fall in the area, doesn't fall into disrepair and become an island where it's in disrepair? I'm not familiar with these. So if someone could answer that question, I'd appreciate it.
I can try. I was involved in constructing some condos over in Meadowbrook and they have a real strong condo association. Everyone has to pay into it. It's, it's a legal binding document. The condo association goes as far as taking care of replacement siding. Roofs. They have landscape requirements. They're very strict because they're all homeowners and they all are united to a common good. And they have to sign on when they get in there.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Okay, any other questions? Nyla, are you, are you through or can I?
I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
Gary, any questions, comments? Good. Kristen? Bill? Okay, yeah, as Kevin mentioned, the, the plan commission approved this and I don't see any other reasons for us to delay it. I'm in favor of it as well. I'd look for somebody with a motion.
Motion to approve the general development plan amendment condominium plat for lot 61 and developers agreement of the Arboretum Village as conditioned on all outstanding issues being revolved to the satisfaction of the village engineer and village attorney.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil Holmes, second by Kristen Rungy. Any other comments? Okay, Caitlin vote please.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Feldner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next under new business, we have discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd, any updates that you or Bill would like to share?
I'll toss it to Bill first. What, what are you seeing out there, Doc?
So actually vaccination rates are.
You accidentally muted.
The vaccine is obviously being put out there and we have hopefully continued to have excellent acceptance. It's appears to be working very well as far as the hospital goes. We are getting more younger people that are positive than we've had before, but so far appears to be stabilized with more vaccines coming in. So thanks to everybody for getting it.
Okay, Dr. Random, thank you for that update. Todd, did you have anything you wanted to add or?
Just that we did have a staff meeting with our, our audio visual consultants last week and I was about, went about almost two hours going over the various ways in which we engage the public during our different public meetings. And that's with the goal of, of getting back to in-person meetings with the opportunity for a high, we call it hybrid approach, virtual participation while the meeting is also occurring publicly. So we're going to be in the midst of that within, I think about two weeks now, we should have a, a scope of work, a proposal. I'll, I'll admit to you right now, I think it's going to be, there's going to be an investment in front of us to, to do this well. With that, I'll also say that with some of the COVID funding that we are going to be having come our ways, this seems like it may be an extremely appropriate way in which to use some of those funds to support this approach to public meetings. We also were really clear with the consultants that whatever we come up with, we want to make sure that it's not an investment that is only utilized, could be utilized at our current village hall with the thought that we might be moving to a different facility at some time. We want to make sure that the equipment is easily pick it up, take it elsewhere, implement elsewhere. So, so that is underway. And like all of you, I, we're anxious to find a good reason, good way to get back to safe public meetings.
So based on what you're saying with that, Todd, you're seeing something coming to us as a board, probably at the end of May, second meeting in May?
I think that would be accurate.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, next we have under new business, discuss and take action on agreements with Fred Colquitt Tennis and Sports Services for professional services pertaining to 2022 projects in Blue Ridge, Tierney, Savannah and Hanover Parks. Sue?
I am willing to take this one on. So this is for separate agreements with Fred Colquitt Tennis and Sports Services. This is a consultant that we have been engaged with since 2017 when he and his team completed a village-wide survey of all of the hard surface courts throughout the parks in the village. Very comprehensive review of every court surface. And since that time, we then have been relying on him to help us determine what the best steps are to care for in some time, in some places repair and in some places replace courts throughout the village. This set of agreements includes Fred's work to help us plan for step one improvements to these four different parks. And then the second part of each agreement includes funding where he helps us work through those actual construction projects. Just briefly, Blue Ridge Park is a simple crack filling and resurfacing. So that court is in pretty good shape and we want to do a bit of work out there to keep it that way. Tierney and Hanover, so Tierney Park, one tennis court. Hanover, we're now talking about the court on the top of the hill near the park shelter. Both of those facilities are in horrible condition. Really not even safe any longer and both of those need to be completely replaced. And then the third item is Savannah Park. And in that situation, it is actually the replacement of the sport court surfacing, which is on both the tennis and the roller blade hockey rink as well as the boards that surround the hockey rink. So this is, again, these contracts are for Fred's assistance in getting those projects going. We will be back to the village board to ask for the funding for actual projects when we get a little bit further down the road. Park committee did review these contracts at their April 7th meeting and recommended approval.
Okay, yes, I think that we had a very nice discussion with the Parks Committee on this and they were all recommended for approval. And with the program that we've put in place to make sure that our courts are being tended to properly, safe, as Sue said. We fully supported this. Phil, you're the chair of the Parks Committee. Do you have any other comments?
No. All I say is the balls are bouncing pretty good on the courts that they've been fixing up. And there's no, there are no more bird baths on the courts as we go forward. It's all looking nice.
Okay.
I would move to approve the agreements with Fred Coleman Tennis and Sports Services for professional services pertaining to 2022 projects, 22 projects in Blue Ridge, Tierney, Savannah and Hanover Parks.
Okay, we have a motion by Phil and we have a second by three people, but I think it's our Dr. Random's angle up first. So I'm going to give Dr. Random the second on that one. Any other comments? Okay, Caitlin roll call, please.
Chris Feldner?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Next we have discuss and take action on a request by Lone Silo North LLC for extension of the approval for QuickTrip certified survey map and request to reconsider the deed restriction related to the previously approved rezoning of the property Kilkenny Farms West. Kevin?
Yeah, we're gonna take this in two parts and really the second part is, is no need to take action on the QuickTrip. Some of you will remember that the, the plan commission granted approval of the site plan for the second QuickTrip on the, I guess on the west side of, of the street. They haven't moved forward with that project yet. We did as part of that, put some deed restrictions on that property that it'd only be used for a convenience store. QuickTrip wasn't comfortable with, with the, with the full deed restrictions as, as presented, was coming up on a year now. They don't have immediate plans to pursue the, the QuickTrip at this time. They would like to have a one-year extension on approval of the certified survey map. Our ordinances have automatic sunset provision where the approval is only good for, for one year. Staff is totally supportive of this. This plan commission was supportive, a joint planning commission was supportive of the one-year extension and then we'll continue to work through some of the, maybe a modified deed restriction that would be acceptable to the village and to QuickTrip. So the only action that we're asking you to take tonight is a one-year extension on approval of the certified survey map for the, for the Tierneys and for QuickTrip. And certainly we got a really good developer, a very good user in, in QuickTrip. So whatever we can do to, to keep them moving forward, I think is in our best interest.
Okay, board members, questions for Kevin? If you have one, please raise your hand. Okay, as, as Kevin mentioned, again, the plan commission was in full support of extending this for a year. So let's take that one first. And do we have a motion by anyone to extend by a year? Kristen Rungy's hand went up.
I'll make a motion to extend the time period in which the certified survey map must be recorded until May 1st, 2022.
Motion by Kristen Rungy, second by Dr. Bill Random. Any other comments? Okay, call a question, Caitlin?
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Feldner?
Yes.
All, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And then the second part, Kevin, do we, what, what do we need to do really tonight?
No action. In fact, I thought I've revised the agenda to take that off, but it's on here. So but I would just say, you don't, you don't need to take any action unless, is Brian on tonight? Yeah, he is, but I don't think you need to take any action on it unless Brian's got a suggestion.
Nope, no action. Okay, with that said, I would have to, I'll give the option if the board members have any questions for Kevin in regards to this, but probably not going to be a lot of feedback at this point. Any questions for Kevin? Comments? Okay, seeing none, let's move on. So item number four, which is discuss and take action on development agreements and Tiff assistance request for affordable housing project at 701 slash 705 West Main Street is requested by Cohen Esri Development Group. It sounds like, I think we're going to be able to do this all in open session. So unless there's a need that we see as we go through our discussions, but I, I think we'll be able to get this done all in open. So that said, Todd, are you introducing or is Kevin introducing or Brian?
No, Brian Kleinmeyer and I are going to work on it together and you're right, Chris. Brian and I do believe that things are in order in a way that we likely won't have to go to closed session, but just a reminder that if, if the board does care to dive more deeply into some of the, the terms and conditions and desire a closed session for being strategic regarding those negotiations, we have it listed for you to do that. But we've had some really good and productive back and forth with the Cohen Esri team. I know Brian Sweeney is on the call and Brian and I have had a number of back and forth with them. I think we've got a, most things worked out, a couple of blanks to fill in for you tonight and Brian walked, wants to walk through those couple of items as well as maybe touch on the key provisions in the agreement.
Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Sure. So if you look at your packet, starting on page 89 is the agreements. And so what I'd like to do is just talk about some changes that have been made to the agreement from the meeting that we had two weeks ago. And then there's three other points that based on the discussions that we've had with Mr. Sweeney and with Cohen Esri that we'll want to talk about. The, the focus of the changes to the agreement are, are in, start on page 92. And, and if you recall, so this is section three, which talks about obligations for Cohen Esri. And if you recall, in the first version of the agreement that you had two weeks ago, we had some placeholders for certain items that we were going to want to have addressed. And those placeholders in certain spots kind of referred back to the different agreement or agreements that Cohen Esri will be executing with WIDA as part of their project. And so for example, if you look at section 3C on page And so, for example, if you look at section three C on page ninety-two of your packet, which is page four of the agreements. We have, we filled in one of those placeholders and essentially the purpose of this placeholder is twofold. To make sure that the housing that is going to be constructed at the project, in fact, is, you know, affordable house. Or at least eighty percent of it, based on the numbers that have been provided, affordable housing under the statutes. And then what we've done is we've incorporated this land use restriction agreements. That Cohen Esri is going to be executing with WEDA. And we've essentially or effectively incorporated the terms and conditions of that agreement into our documents. So, you know, obviously, the developer knows that they're going to have to satisfy the terms and conditions within their WEDA agreement. And if, for whatever reason, and I don't expect this to happen, but if they were to be out of compliance with that WEDA agreement, they would also be out of compliance with our agreement. Immediately above that in section three B. So this is section three B, this is kind of our standard language that we have that says. If someone's, you know, if we're providing financial assistance for a project, they need to construct the project pursuant to the site plan. That's been approved by the Plan Commission. So we have that language with then two sub-paragraphs on it. The, the, the second one relates to a, a fire flow issue. And then there's just language in here where the developers agreeing that they're going to have to work with the village and our village engineer and our fire department. To make sure that there's adequate fire flow to, to the building. The, the first subsection is the one that you talked about at your last board meeting and then we talked about at Plan Commission. Now, I will, I will tell you that I think that we're probably going to be updating this language a little bit, little bit. But the substance is not going to change. And the substance is Cohen Esri is going to build the sidewalk. As it come, as, you know, in front of their building as it extends east to, I think, the intersection. Or at least to another property. What they're not going to do at this time is construct the sidewalk west. Because as the board had identified at the last meeting, you don't want to have a, a sidewalk constructed to the west because there's no connection right now. And that creates potentially some public safety issues. The other thing the board had identified at the last meeting is. It may be the case that if we're going to have an extension, let's say to the O'Malley Conservancy. That in fact, we don't want it at the front of the property, we want it at the back of the property. And so we've drafted some language where the developer is going to agree that if we're going to do that in the future. That land will be dedicated to us at no cost and they will, they will pay those fees. Now, one of the things that we're going to want to talk about later is, we actually might have a little bit different way that we want to approach this. Because we, there's just so many unknowns related to sidewalk. But I want, I want to come back to that if that's okay with you. A, as I continue to go down through here, if you look at the top of page five of the agreement, so page ninety-three of your packet. We, we do have language here in subsection D that talks about the project has to start at a particular date and be constructed by a particular date. We, we did, there is a change in, in the, the starting date. When we initially talked at the last meeting, we talked about a start date of July first, twenty twenty-one. The developer is asked for a, you know, to extend that one month to make, just to make sure they have everything in order. So they would need to start by August first of twenty twenty-one, so just a month. The same end date is in there, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. I think because it's just a month, staff was supportive of the request to change the start date. And so that's contained in the documents. The other, so another change is, I, I guess, the, the, on, on page five, we have this property maintenance section. And I, I'd actually kind of like to come back and talk to you about that too. Because the two primary things that we want to talk to you about based on our discussions with the, with Cohen Esri. Is the property maintenance issue and the sidewalk issue. So I'm going to double back on that if that's okay with you. The rest of the document looks very similar to what you have before with one change. On page six of the agreement, which is page ninety-four of your packet. If you recall, we, we've inserted language in here that says that the. The tid to affordable housing project payment that's going to be made to the developer is seventy, except capped at seventy-five percent. Of the estimated amount that we think we're going to get. The, the number in, in there now is three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar, three hundred and twenty-six, six hundred dollars. That number is a little bit higher than the one that we talked about at the board level because the estimate that we have, in fact, it was, it was in the packet. And, and we didn't see it. We had estimated it to be, I think it was four hundred and twenty thousand dollars of increment that we were going to get, Todd. Where actually the most recent numbers that Ellers has run is closer to like four hundred and thirty-five. So we took the number that Ellers had provided and used it, put seventy-five percent to that. And that's how we came up with this three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars plus number there. So obviously, that's a discussion point for the village board, but I wanted to highlight it for you. Other than that, as you go through the remainder of the agreements. Again, it's very similar, if not identical, to the other tax increment agreements that we have with, with other parties. Where we're making a develop, an incentive payment. The difference here is this is going to be a lump sum payment. As opposed to an annual payment based on the increment that's generated. So, other than wanting to double back and talk about sidewalk and the property maintenance. That's kind of the updates from the, the version of the agreement that you saw two weeks ago. And so I guess I would stop in case there's any questions at this point.
Okay, board members, questions? If you have any, raise your hand. Okay, I, I just have one and, and maybe Brian can answer this one. With the backup of August first from July first, Brian. Do we, do we know what your construction timeframe is? Is it fifteen-month build, twelve-month build, eight-month build? I know we put in some, some buffer there. I'm just trying to get a grasp on when it would be completed. If it's starting, assuming it's going to start August first. So what, when do you anticipate the?
Well, actually, we, we, excuse me, we hope to close end of May, early June and be in the ground as soon as possible. The, just the suggested change to August was just, you know, being overly conservative. Things happen before, you know, you get in the ground. So we just wanted to be conservative. And we estimate the construction time as being twelve to thirteen months. So.
Okay.
Well before the December timeframe.
Perfect. Thank you.
In fact, from a, from a marketing, from a marketing of the units perspective, you don't want to. You don't want to open up in December. You want to open up when the weather's good and people are moving, et cetera. So.
Perfect. Okay, and then. Brian, those other two issues, do we, should, should we just address those right off the bat here? I mean, just go one at a time?
Yeah, I'm ready to do that if, yes.
Okay, I don't think there's any other questions other than mine. So go ahead.
Okay, so now I'm going to take you back up to ninety, page ninety-two of the packet, page, page four of the agreement. So, eh, eh, we have complete agreement with Cohen Esri on the concept of, you know, what, we don't want the sidewalk constructed, constructed to the west at this point. What, what we've talked about is having in this agreement, modifying this paragraph. So it's very clear that if the village decides at some point in time in the future that it wants to have that extension to the west. One, the land is going to be dedicated to us at no cost. And two, the, the developer would cover those costs now. But we don't know what those potential costs are going to be. And we don't even know if we're going to want this extension provided. So we, we, we've talked about an idea of, let's put language in the agreement that makes it clear on the dedication. And then if we decide to go ahead with the work, the village is, would actually take the first step in doing the work. And, and constructing the path or sidewalk. But then the developer would agree that they would pay us back. And we've done that before in other circumstances and kind of the, the protection that we build in to, to something like that is. If for whatever reason, they don't pay us when we, when we do put the construction in, we would put language in this agreement that says, under those circumstances. We have the ability to put the costs on the property as a special charge pursuant to the Wisconsin statutes. It, it is, it is language that we, we've utilized in the past in other agreements. I, I do believe it's protected us in the past. And if you all are comfortable with that, that's essentially the change that we would make to this paragraph to kind of address that scenario.
Okay, Gary, Gary put his thumbs up. Nyla's got her hand up. Anybody who have any objections to this, doesn't look like it. So, okay, Brian, that seems acceptable, acceptable.
Okay, then if you go, now we're on, in, in paragraph four, that this, so this is on property maintenance. And, and so we have language in the agreement right now, I'm sorry, page five, section four, that talks about. The fact that they're going to have to maintain appropriate insurance, they're going to have to properly maintain the property and the project. And then, and then we've added the, the last sentence that talks about maintaining an annual fund. To address maintenance of the building on the property, the landscaping on the property, the playground. Different things like that. So we, we were able to get some information from Cohen Esri. On the different types of maintenance funds that they're going to have. And I think the most significant one is, I'm just going to read this, is as part of their agreement with WEDA. WEDA requires that they maintain what they call a replacement reserve. And the, the reserve starts at fifteen thousand dollars for them. And it's based on the number of units that they have. And it increases three percent each year for the first fifteen years. So it starts at fifteen thousand dollars. This is an annual fund that they have to maintain. By the time you get to year three, it's just short of twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's essentially the purpose that we've been told is for general upkeep. So there are other funds that they're going to maintain. You know, just because they, they operate a business and they operate, you know, apartment units like this in other places. But I, so I think kind of the fundamental question for the, for the board is. We can certainly incorporate this language regarding the replacement reserve for WEDA. Are you, oh, sorry, I just realized my video's off. Are you okay with that? Or do you mean, or would you like to see something more than that?
Board members, comments, feelings? I think the WEDA plan is, I mean, WEDA's been doing this for years. I don't know why we'd want to change the rules off of that. But if people want it to be more strict or less strict, we can obviously look at that. But I'm seeing everybody's thumb went up. So I think going with WEDA's plan is, is what we're going to look at.
Okay.
Unless they see something different. Everybody give a thumbs up at the same time because they were kind of going up, if you're good with that. Okay, perfect. Okay.
So the, the last thing to talk about is, right now, the agreement contemplates having a thirty-year term. And, you know, for, for this agreement, it's essentially you're going to have, the project gets constructed. The payment is made. We have language in here that talks about the fact that within twenty years, we're going to get paid back. And, and I think the other issue that we kind of have out there is the last two that we've talked about, this maintenance issue. And, you know, what's going to happen with a potential extension to the west? I think Cohen Esri has, has suggested or asked to change the, the term of the agreement to twenty years to correspond with the loan. You know, that makes sense from the loan perspective. I think that the issue that we have is. You know. Will, will the village have made up its mind on this extension issue, whether it's a path or a sidewalk within the next twenty years? Or do you want that additional ten years to still be able to make that decision? Because if the agreement terminates in year twenty and all of a sudden in year twenty-five, we decide we want to have the extension. We don't, we no longer have the positive terms and conditions that are in this agreement now. And the same thing occurs with the property maintenance. I mean, if you're comfortable with essentially the WEDA rules. Then you're probably less concerned with maintaining the, having the property maintenance. And so there's a couple of ways to do it. Leave it at thirty years, that's one alternative. Change it to twenty years. Or something in the middle, which we've done before sometimes, especially when we have tax agreements. Is basically the, the terms of the agreement may end after twenty years, but there's certain provisions that would last longer. And again, the one that I'm thinking about is just this idea of, of with the, the path of the sidewalk extension. Are you okay if the village has to make that decision within twenty years? Or would you like to give yourself an extra ten years on that one?
My, my preference is if, go, go ahead, Nyla.
I would like to see extended for thirty years for the path.
Okay. So my preference would be, and this is only because I'm in banking, staying consistent with whatever the, the twenty years is, is generally what we'd like to do as a bank. I understand the concept of the, the path. I think, is there a way for us to track? Like every five years that, you know, we look at this particular topic. So it's in front of us. So it's not out of sight, out of mind completely. And that, that, you know, twenty years or nineteen years, we're scrambling then to figure out how we're going to do this. I think it's anticipated that we're going to do something there from a path perspective, but. Seeing we have nothing on there, I, 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 I'm, I'm open to either way. I'm not like staunchly, you know, at twenty years, thirty years would be fine. They're, they're asking for it. There's probably. I'm not sure, Brian, maybe you would like to shed some light on why you want it to be twenty years. Is that okay to ask Brian Kleinmeyer?
It is okay, yes.
Okay.
Sure. And, and our thought was, was, as Chris said, just to be consistent with, you know, with the agreement. So.
Okay, so. So I guess we need to look at whatever, Bill, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, because I don't know nothing of the property back on the backside.
You're muted again.
Is this something, I know nothing about what the property looks like on the backside. But is this something that would just be like, hey, it's smart to put the concrete in now and just forget about it and leave it there for thirty years or, and it's already there? I, I don't know, but I'm just thinking, what's the hazard there?
Gary?
I think in a lot of cases, Bill, that's probably, you know, a buddy in the O'Malley property. And that might be some type, if we, if we choose that route to go behind the property. That's going to be some type of elevated trail or something that we don't know yet. You know, I would suggest maybe, maybe we meet him halfway. I don't want to make this more complicated. But just, you know, understand the twenty years, but maybe extend this out twenty-five years. If, if, if we can't figure this out in twenty-five years. I'm not sure how many of us are going to be around twenty-five years from now.
So really comes down to that, guys. I mean, we, we want twenty, twenty-five or thirty years. So whoever would want to speak up and be strong about it, then, then we'll go there. Nyla, go ahead.
I could meet halfway and go as twenty-five. I'd be happier with that than with twenty.
Okay. So that said, who is, who is in support of twenty-five years? Raise your hand or thumb up. Okay, there we go. Brian drafted with twenty-five years.
Yep. So, so this is the situation we have right now. I'm certainly willing to answer any of the questions, but I just kind of want to jump ahead. So on, on, on page one oh seven of your packet, you have a, a, a motion. Motion to approve the developers' agreement between the Village of Wannakee and Cohen Esri Development Group for Villages on Main at seven oh one, seven oh five West Main Street. I would change the end, end of that to say, subject to final review and approval by the village administrator and village attorney. And the reason I say that is, as we've gone through this discussion, my understanding of there, there are no real changes within the document. That's in the packet, other than changing thirty to twenty-five years, and we will do that. But in addition to that, we're, we're going to change the maintenance language, the property maintenance language. And the paragraph regarding the sidewalk and the pathway pursuant to our discussion tonight. And I think Todd and I have very clear guidance on what that is. And there's a couple of other minor language changes that they've, they're, they're, they still want to talk about that don't change the substance of the document. So that's why we, we need a little bit of flexibility to update the agreement based on our discussion tonight. But other than that, Todd, I've, I mean, I have obviously a pretty lengthy list here, but I've, I've hit all of the high points that I was hoping to cover with the board.
Yeah, yeah, you have.
Okay, so I'm actually going to make the motion to approve the developers' agreement between the Village of Wannakee and Cohen Esri Development Group. For Villages on Main at seven oh one, seven oh five West Main Street, as prepared by the village attorney. With Todd, village administrator and village attorney able to modify as needed. Is that Brian, is that okay to say it that way?
Yeah, everything you say, subject to final review and approval by.
Approval by the village attorney and village administrator.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Kristen Rongy. Any other comments? This has been a long one in the, in the works, guys. So this is, you know, I'm, I'm proud that we're at this point finally. And happy that we were able to get to this point. So with that, roll, roll call vote, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye.
Yes.
Kristen Rongy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Sollner.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Brian Sweeney.
We want to thank you all for your support and it's been a, a great journey. And we, I don't know what I'm going to do on Monday nights from here on out. But we look forward to seeing you all at the groundbreaking.
That sounds great. You can give Kristen Rongy a call. She's probably going to have some Mondays available, but maybe, we'll see. Anyway, all right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, here's to four long years.
Okay. Next, we have discuss and take action on first edition. Next, we have discuss and take action on first addition to Heritage Hill's final plat and phase two developers' agreement. Kevin, is this you? Or is this Brian?
It is, uh, I'll share my screen.
I have the presenter being the village attorney, so.
Well, I'll start.
You're the man, you're the man, go ahead.
I, I want to point out a couple of things, and, and Brian may as well, I just want to bring up the, the plat. Here's the, the, the final plat for the, for the next phase, and I, I was trying to count, I think there's like twenty-five or twenty. Twenty-some different lots that they're proposing to, to add to this next phase, and it's consistent with the summary plat that's, that's been approved. By the, by the board in the. Uh, one thing that I also want to point out is the, um, developers' agreement. So this section right in here, in, originally when we put this together, we had a phasing plan that had, uh. All the homes counted as part of, um. All the homes counted as, as part of a phasing plan. And I, I did look back just to see what we were, we were, where we were at in terms of phasing going forward, and I think I put this probably. Together early, probably a year ago, so or more. And, you know, identifies a couple of different projects that, that just haven't started yet, like, uh, Golden Ponds. You know, we initially had thought that might start as early as twenty twenty-one, I, I think that's a, a farther, a year out yet. And I think, uh, K West, Kill Kenny West is, is probably, uh, next year, construction twenty twenty-two. But we had penciled in for Heritage Hills, you know, ninety, ninety homes every other year they did. Or, um. That were, that were at it, um.
Zoom on that out just a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, that's good, thanks.
And this really had an average of twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five homes a year, and we do have some. Exceptions to that, so if there is parade of homes, you know, those, those are, are accepted, those are exceptions. Multi-family housings are, are not counted as part of these, the, you know, the single family were, and the duplexes were. So what I want to point out is that we didn't, we weren't really clear if those twin homes were part of the phasing. And so we had asked, um. We'd really asked Veridian, and, and Dan's on here, if you could bring Dan in, uh, Todd, I think that'd be helpful. Is that, that they've asked if they can bring in, roll in the, the duplex lots, or the, the twin. Have they think they come twin villages or something along that line? And then have those phased in much in the same fashion as the single family. I don't think it has a big impact in terms of how many homes are going to get, uh, built in terms of trying to go over that one twenty-five over the next five years. But it, but it is more than, than I think what I anticipated, uh, that was going to go here, I'm, I'm not objecting to it by any means, but. Don't want to be, to be surprised that there's going to be more than, more than what we anticipated or, originally. But, you know, there's some lag with some of the other projects, so I don't think it has a, has a big impact. Brian, your, your, um, your room was lit up, so we, what, your green room now, what, what, what did you have to add to this?
Just, I mean, I would say that this is kind of our, our standard, um. Phase two agreement, we work off of our larger, uh, developer agreement that essentially is the foundation. And then we just kind of make individual changes de- depend, depending on the phases. So, on page one sixteen of your packet, that's where, you know, you start getting into the teeth of it. A lot of the stuff is going to be the same, um, there is some language in subsections five and six on page two of the agreement. Um, this is, this is language regarding park improvements that is, is essentially intended to meet with the practices. And the practice is very consistent with, with, with what's in the initial development agreement. And what we've done with Mr. Tierney's developments, which is essentially, um, the developer goes out and builds the parks. And instead of us collecting the fee, um, it, it gets. They, they spend the money as opposed to us collecting the fee and the spending the money, and that's turned about to be better for village taxpayers. Because the product that you get is a little bit better than we otherwise might get. So, the, there is some new language in here, but it's really just to, to, to match the, the, the practice. And the practice was almost identical to what we had in our agreement, but we felt it best to update it. We have added some language on page three of the documents to try to address, you know, some of the, you know, there have been some. We had a meeting where there was a lot of discussion about blasting for this development, and so we've added some language in here to deal with. Remember, uh, somebody in the community had mentioned some concerns about a lack of fencing around piles, well, we, we've got that in there, and. We have, um, you know, notice i- it to the village, so that the village can get the information out. And then, you know, if you go back to that meeting we had in February, there was a little bit of a concern about or a discussion about. Well, the, these pre-blasting surveys and, and what property owners get contacted, and. We want to work with the, with the developer to have a little bit larger scope of an area that would be covered, and so we have some language here. Eight D to address that, um, Kevin already touched on the language in that subsection nine, really regarding the, um. The, uh, the phasing, I, I think the rest of the language essentially incorporates everything that we already have in our initial development agreement. There's certain road improvements that, um, I think, Kevin, you have to help me out on this, but based on some work that the DOT has done. We felt it was, it felt it's more appropriate to not have it done during phase one, but rather a later phase. And so that, that link, there's some language in there on that, too.
Yeah, initially, we thought that we had planned to make improvements at Division Street and Main Street for. To comply with the, the traffic impact analysis that was done, and that's really to create some, some better turn lanes. But with talking with, with Dan Day and, and some officials from the DOT. We think it's better to combine those projects, and that would be the, the main entrance into the subdivision, which will come off of Main Street. Combine that work with the work that'll be done at Division Street, so we're only, really only disrupting the, the traffic along Main Street. During one construction season rather than two.
Um, real quick, uh, I, Dan Day, I got a, uh, the message from you about letting Chris Ellers in from Veridian. I just got an email, I just got an email from Chris saying, can you let me in, and I sent him the link, but I don't, I don't see him. On either the attendee or panelist, uh, list here, so as soon as I do, I'll, I'll certainly bring him in.
Okay.
Oh, I'm on there twice, I don't know if that was me on there twice, if maybe I, I shared that link.
Oh, maybe.
That might have been it, he might have been trying to come in as me, because I shared the link.
Um, well, I just talked to the DOT issue quickly, um, we've been working with the DOT. Trying to figure out exactly how we want to do the main entrance with Ronnie Boulevard, and it's become apparent that we're going to. Uh, uh, instead of having two projects one year and then a project the next year, is try to combine them and do them all as one project. The, uh, TIA did allow for a certain time period to allow for those improvements to be done at Division and Main. Um, which was up to four years, but we had put it into the development agreement to do them, uh, right away. So that issue, I think, just makes a, a lot better coordination sense to be able to do it, so that's, that's pretty, uh, easy from that standpoint. I see Chris Ellers is on here now, I'll let him talk to the, uh, phasing, uh, twin home issue. Um, but, uh, otherwise, Kevin, you were right, it's twenty-five single family lots, um, in the phase two development. Uh, agreement, uh, I mean, in the phase two development agreement, um, for what we're expanding with that final plat that's, uh, in front of you this evening. Um, Chris, did you want to talk then to the phasing?
Um, no, it's, it's fine for now, I will just say that these twins, um. Are selling lightning fast, because that's what we, we came out with, that was still under three hundred thousand, and, uh. You know, in, in theory, I, I understand what the village is trying to do here, and, and we're fine with it for now, but eventually. You know, we could get to the point where it hamstrings us from, from bringing on more, um, attainable price product, but. Again, near future, we're fine, uh, right now, so maybe it's something we just look at down the road. Um, and, and then work with the village on to kind of come up with a, a schedule when we need it.
Yeah, what I suggested they, they do, and I think this is what got incorporated into the agreement. Is just really phase out those twin homes at the same rate as the single family homes. So that we get a consistent blend going through the development, so we don't get, you know, over the top of one type of product over the other. And so that, that's how it was initially wrote, and there was nothing particular. Strong reasons for that, just that, that does good starting point is, is all I'd say.
Okay, board members, any questions right now? Hmm, Gary?
Yeah, I had a question, and Brian, Brian answered my question and email today, uh, pretty much, it talks. My question got to be about, um, uh, people. Expanding their lots onto village property. Um, apparently, it's in the developers' agreement already. We just have an issue throughout this village with people. You know, and it caused Bill Fredericks ends up dealing with all of it. You know, people have gardens, they have trampolines, we've had a baseball diamond, we have, uh, a lot of things that people build in our wetlands. And then they complained to Billy's not mowing the grass the right way. And people need to understand that that's the village property, and it's not their property. Uh, because we wouldn't allow people that surround Centennial Park or Village Park. You know, to put a basketball court in our property or a trampoline. So, I just want to make sure is all developments going forward. That we have strict enough language in there that Bill isn't caught in the middle trying to enforce it. That's it.
So Chris and Dan, maybe, can you share with us, how many homes do you have currently, uh, under construction right now? Roughly.
Uh, we're, we're, we're building, we probably have twenty-five, uh, to thirty that we, we've. Um, started, now we get going and we like to, um. Kind of ramp up the first phase a little bit with, with bringing on more spec houses with anticipation that they'll. Um, we'll release them for sale down the road, but we, I'd say we have twenty-five to thirty under, maybe twenty-five under construction, I know we just signed. Uh, a contract today for, we have fifteen sales, uh, so far out there, and the first family is moving in. Um, in Mid Bay, so we're getting close, we're trying to get everything buttoned up for that, the, the first family, we actually have living, breathing people out there. Um, but, you know, once we get going, which we are right now, uh, we, we try to keep the construction moving along at a pretty good pace.
So how do you feel about, uh, that, that's great to hear, are, are you, uh, you mentioned that the price point, you're trying to get enough of those in. To keep the price point there, are you, how is the price point hold going at this point, are you able to still deliver with everything you were? Anticipating, or are prices creeping up as a result of costs of different things?
Well, and the biggest one has been lumber, and again, I, I had long talks with Nyla about this too, and, and, um. You know, when we initially presented pre-COVID, uh, we were working off, you know, a price matrix that, that changed. An average of three percent a year for the past, you know, twelve years, and so we were pretty confident with our pricing, well now. Uh, we've had such an unexpected, you know, just, uh, ramp up in lumber pricing, um. That it's, it's added about forty thousand dollars of housing cost. Um, now we've deferred that and put, you know, blended that out a little bit, I'm still able to deliver some product under three hundred thousand, that sells right away. Uh, but not as much as I initially had wanted, uh, and that doesn't mean that once lumber. Prices subside a little bit, that we can't get back down, uh, to that price point. Um, so it's something that, you know, again, we're working for, uh, we're working off a fixed margin basis, it's not. Something we're trying to gouge people on or anything like that, um, but we have, it's just, it, it's just crazy right now. Uh, the shortage of supply in, in all construction materials, but especially lumber.
I appreciate that, I, I just kind of want to let the public hear that, because I've been getting that question more than anything, it's. How is, not just Veridian, but any contractors right now, um, with lumber costs, how are they? Holding the line, so to speak, on pricing as best they can, so that was a great, uh, synopsis you gave, lastly, um. I know the blasting part is where we're not anticipating anything in number two. Um, obviously, that's another thing I asked, there, there's a reason I asked that question about how many. So you've got twenty-five homes right now, so any blasting that occurs, the homes you're building right now are going to be the ones that are closest to any of that blasting, fair to say? Any future blasting?
Fair to say, yes.
Yes, yes, and they have been, they've got, those basements have been in, and, and again, where everything, we're not concerned about it, um.
So, just, just for the public's knowledge, so you're not anticipating anything in, in phase two. Phase three, what, what, what is your anticipation for when phase three may be coming before us?
I don't know, I have to figure out where phase three is going next, so, uh, we're kind of working through that, and that won't be. Um, my guess is, it'd probably be in the winter when we bring it to you with, with hopes of starting it next spring. Um, and we can go one of two directions, and that's a, a lot of that depends on how we do with the DOT. Depends on how we do with sales, um, you know, we've got a, of, of, of different housing types, and, and so, um. You know, we haven't quite figured out where phase three is going yet.
Perfect, okay, those are all my questions, and any other board members with any questions? Okay, so we have a recommended motion here, is there anything different, Brian, that we would need to add to it, or is it, is it good as is?
Um, no, I, I think it's good as is.
Okay, so I'm looking for that motion by someone, please.
Uh, I can do that, motion to approve the first addition to Heritage Hill's final plat. And phase two developers' agreement condition on all outstanding issues being resolved to the satisfaction. Of the village engineer and village attorney.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams, second by Nyla Fry. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yep.
Chris Elner?
Yes. And we have one, thank you, we have one final, uh, motion, and we're going to allow one person to make that a motion. Since this is for last time to do that.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Kristen Rungy to adjourn. And shockingly, Bill Random was with the second, so, um, with that said. Um, appreciate everybody's meeting tonight, um, good job, and Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yes.
Chris Elner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, you're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Do you have something you want to say, Todd?
Nope, I'm waving.
Oh, okay.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.